What we have here is an annual tradition. It started when it made more sense. I think it was Bruce yesterday saying, "I want to bet on how many times the number of attendees of the original Ruby conference comes up at this conference." So I'm going to bring it up for, I don't know, the nth time. And I bet it N, so I'm going to win. So the original conference had like three people. It was me, Rich, Mats, I think, right? 2001 in Tampa. But since the very first Ruby conference, we've been doing a Q&amp;A town hall. This is the first time we called it a town hall. We actually roundtable, right?
Roundtable was just a bit of a stretch.
So a roundtable discussion with Mats. We're going to do a town hall tonight because we've got 500-ish people here. And Rich and I are going to help moderate. The idea is you get to ask Mats anything Ruby-related you'd like to ask him.
Ruby-related.
Ruby-related. Right? But we have 500 people, so if you start talking from your seats, we're going to yell at you because we have to be orderly about this. So if you want to ask a question, go over there and we'll be nice to you. You'll ask the question on the podium. Make a line. Anything Ruby-related you want or software development-related, I guess. So if you want to go ahead and get started moving over there. I guess I should officially actually introduce Mats. Here we have Yukihiro Matsumoto, creator of the Ruby language. I think you all knew that, but let's give him a round of applause. So we're going to be really informal, except for the fact that you must be over there or you will be punished.
Is this the largest crowd you've ever been in front of? Just a question. Mats?
Is this the largest crowd? Is it the largest?
Is this the largest Ruby crowd you've ever been in front of, Mats?
No, you guys can come up here. We'll just kind of wind up here.
I used to speak in the sign users group in Japan, which was in a thousand people.
That's not Ruby-related, though.
Oh, but I presented about Ruby.
All right. Awesome.
Okay, so come on.
I have a question and I need to understand about -- I'm sorry. My name is Steve Downey. I'm with Gulf Coast Digital Systems. And we have developed a command and control system for media players over the Internet that uses exclusively Ruby. It works very well and I love the language. I'm a little bit concerned about one issue, and that happens to be backwards compatibility. I installed 1.9 and ran it on my program and it immediately broke. And it broke for what I consider to be a very bad reason. And it's because they took a library file function called file dot exists and changed it to file dot exist. That should not break code that already works.
What is your question?
My question is, how will Ruby going forward as a serious developer's language pay attention to backwards compatibility and how important is it? And if it needs more people to be involved in testing or in developing compatibility libraries that can be included to make sure that it doesn't break existing code, how should that be handled?
To keep the compatibility, yeah, we -- sometimes we need to break compatibility for some reasons. And I try to make them as less as possible. And fortunately, the file exists method is one of them. And it was introduced in the very old era and maybe pre-1.0 era. And I should have removed it more earlier, but I don't know. I think I put the -- the application warning, I guess. I didn't, did I? And the 1.9 is the good place to make some kind of backward incompatible changes. And we are not going to add that major break anymore in the near future.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm John Powers. I work at Texas Instruments in the Calculator division. I am investigating putting Ruby as a scripting language in our new line of calculators. Our legal department does not like the GNU license on the RegX package. I'm looking at 1.9. It looks like maybe it's not encumbered by the GPL license. When will 1.9 be production-ready or -- I'm not sure what the right term is. If you're going straight to 2.0 or -- I'm looking for something that I can put in our product that's not encumbered by the GPL license.
G?
Encumbered.
Well, the first question is, when will become the 1.9 production-ready? I'm not sure. It's going to be out for the next Christmas. But it's not going to be as stable as I expected. But it will be the feature-stable, but the level of the implementation would not be as stable as a production-ready. But if no one uses it, it's not going to be as stable. So try 1.9 and report bugs and missed features and let us fix it as soon as.
Christmas of 2007?
Yeah, this Christmas.
No one wants to ask him a question? All right.
We'll eventually have too many questions, I guarantee.
Okay, now the flood begins.
Stop being cowards. Look at him, he's not a coward. Come on up.
I'm Brent Roman with Monterey Bay Aquarium Research Institute. I presented a couple of years ago about that strange robot under the water using Ruby. And it's still out there and it's still on occasion. We actually do deploy it for a month or so at a time and it mostly works. And when it doesn't, it's usually some strange robotic bit that's failed. But my question is, I've been -- I was experimenting with moving it from 1.68 and I've managed just recently, like days before the show here, to get it up and running on 1.86. My original goal was to get it up and running on 1.9, figuring I would just not mess with 1.86. I'd skip a release. I ran into an interesting issue and the code was actually running slower on 1.9, by about 5% or so. And everybody was touting these figures of two and three times or at least a 50% improvement on things that weren't synthetic benchmarks. So I started to look at the actual virtual machine as best I could. I don't pretend to really understand the guts. But as I started to look at it, I came away with the understanding that it's still spending all the same amount of time doing method lookup and it's still spending the same amount of time building objects. But it's highly optimized for fixed nums and for a couple of classes. And I think what happens is that if you're doing operations on things that aren't those classes, then not only do you -- the optimizations actually pay exactly a little bit of a premium because you make all these little tests to see is it this special case, is it that special case, right in the guts of the dispatch. And so I'm wondering if anybody's given any thought to an idea of changing, for instance, fixed nums so that they're closed, so that when you do a fixed num operation, it always produces a fixed num. It can't expand to a big num. And then allowing that, then you could do a whole host of optimizations because then you could actually say, this fixed num will always be a fixed num. So if I have a whole set of operations on them in a row, I can just almost inline them using some of the Git technologies we've seen. So just ideas and I guess I'm looking at this more aggressive optimization ideas that bend the language a little bit. Because what I see is that we really can't do a lot more with it and the creator of the VM has said as much, that without changing Ruby, he can't do a lot more. So just if you'd like, if you could talk about that a bit.
Well, the Koichi and other VM implementer will understand you and I hesitate for to bend the language for the performance, just because, you know, the flexibility wins at the end, I guess, I believe. So even though it makes the optimization difficult, it's still -- the language still needs to be as flexible as it can. But, you know, but like the Yelp does some kind of the fixed num condition by taking the flag that tells you that the fixed num class is not modified from the original. So that kind of trick can be used for the other condition as well.
Okay. So it's really more of a question for?
The answer is, I'm not going to bend the language for the sake of performance.
Okay. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Russ Olson. I'm with FGM. And first, thank you for Ruby.
You're welcome.
And, you know, in the past couple of years, we've seen many implementations of Ruby, many virtual machines that'll run Ruby, JRuby and Iron Ruby. And I was just wondering what you think about that. Do you like the competition or do you think it's a good thing for Ruby? I'd just like to get your reaction.
Implementing the Ruby language is a pretty tough job that I try to -- for example, some of you may know, may have heard the word RIT, which is the first reimplementation of the Ruby language. And I have to confess that I failed. So it's a tough job even for me. So it's kind of incredible for the Charles and other people to implement Ruby on JVM or the Iron Ruby or the Ruby News or other implementation. It's just wonderful. They just did the incredible job. So I just want to compliment them to accomplish that great thing. And I feel pretty positive about the JRuby and the other Ruby implementations, just because, you know, they open up the new world for the people who couldn't use Ruby for various reasons, just because, you know, the boss doesn't know, the language, it's not on JVM or the foo where we want the Java APIs from the Ruby language. And then it just, by this diversity and the Ruby language can be spread and make more people happy. So I'm pretty appreciative of that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeff Parsons and I just want to say, you know, code Ruby be happy has been something that's stuck with me and I try to live by that. And in light of that, my question was, is working on Ruby still something that makes you happy? Do you find joy in it? And if so, what's the most enjoyable part of the experience up to this point?
And I started the development of Ruby in 1993, 14 years ago. And one of the subjects of the development, one of the targets of the development is to become, to enjoy myself. Enjoying, I enjoy programming in Ruby and at the same time, I enjoy designing it and also I enjoy implementing it. It's pretty fun to implement the language by myself. So I have been pretty much enjoying for these years and I still enjoying it very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm just a guy. I have two questions. They're related, though. My first question is, what is the Ruby community and like presence like in Japan?
The Ruby community in Japan is pretty, yeah, pretty much same for people like this. They're fun and nice people and one interested in the new technology and what it called. Yeah, they're good people. And the ratio of the working full-time for Ruby, the Ruby-led job, is a little bit lower than the one that in the States.
The what is lower? Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Less people earning money from Ruby in Japan.
Well, okay, that leads into my next question. Like here in America, the Ruby community has increased drastically over the last two years. And so now that you have like the TI legal department like wondering about your license for your language. I'm wondering, do you feel that pressure, like does that ever reach you where you are or do you still feel separate from it all there?
So, yeah, people are contacting me as the legal staff or they're making NDA with me or something. Basically, I let myself, let me constantly let on the longest development, not to say that I was a shoes for, yeah, keeping away from the enterprise contracting issues.
All right, thank you.
Joe from Edge Case. Thank you because you've shown us that with powerful tools, we can do a lot of really powerful things. We have some unfortunate issues arising in our company where people have, you know, stopped realizing that powerful tools give you powerful results. So I was hoping you could help settle something. What editor do you use?
Excellent. Thank you.
Apple needs to get him that Mac now.
Charlie from JRuby. I'm wondering when we can expect a final 1.9 specification or feature list because we're very interested in starting to make changes to JRuby to support all of it.
The language features are almost fixed, yeah, except for the corner teeny things and the product, the multilingualization, yeah, Unicode handling. I'm now in the process of auditing of the 1.9 changes for years. I just reverted the name error being the subclass of the script error, but I just put back that under the standard error. And I'm going to reverse some of the 1.9 changes in a week or two. And I don't know, maybe before the mid of this month, the feature will be basically fixed.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Matthew Bass. I'm a freelance Ruby developer. I get paid to do what I love every day. Thank you so much for that. My question for you was, when it comes to the creation of Ruby, do you primarily consider yourself a scientist or an artist and why?
Hobbyist. And, well, yeah, it really was my hobby job, hobby project, and I didn't expect this to happen. It's far beyond my expectation. When I designed Ruby back in 1993, I made my own toy language and some of my friends used it. That's what I expected, you know, that maybe 10, 500 users of the language. But now we have 500 people gathered around the States or even worldwide. And I don't know, I don't know how to count the whole Ruby users in the worldwide. Maybe tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people using Ruby now. It's just incredible. It's just far beyond my expectation.
Thank you.
Hi, Mats. I'm Chris. I wrote the ambition gem that Jim Weyer talked about this morning. And I was wondering if you ever have or would consider exposing the parse tree to normal Ruby programs like Ryan Davis's parse tree gem does?
The -- well, first read. What shall we do?
Let me restate my question.
What? What shall we do? You know, the parse tree is pretty implementation-dependent, so exposing it as a spec, you know, that might be pretty tough for us to, what do I say? For in the future, you know, the new parse tree or the change, the structure of the parse tree, that API would be changed a lot. So it's kind of the reason I hesitated to expose the parse tree to the public. Maybe we have to consult with Ryan and the others about the parse tree data.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Mats. I'm Darren. I remember a couple of years ago that you mentioned you pay attention to other languages to learn from them and at the time you mentioned I/O and Haskell. I'm just curious if there are any languages that you're paying, other languages you're paying attention to at the moment.
Recently?
Yes.
Last Ruby call, the Twitch, shows us the Alan video and it was pretty interesting. To confess, I don't really like the language syntax, but its concept is pretty interesting and Alan and some kind of the, what? The distributed programming language like the Sazal from Google or some other language from AT&amp;T or other companies is pretty interesting, but it's not Alphon yet. So the Alan is the language of choice for this year for me and maybe the Sazal or the Hansock would is the language for next year.
Thank you.
Hi, someone made a comment earlier regarding the ability to optimize Ruby, the virtual machine, and that there was nothing left to do. And I was kind of shocked by that comment because I had recently talked to one of the lead developers on the Visual Works team and he talked about two technologies, polymorphic inline caching and dynamic optimization as techniques that are used in the small talk world to really squeeze out every last drop. And I was wondering if you've looked at those, where they are on your radar screen, et cetera.
Did I say there's no room for optimization?
I don't think you said it, he said it, although you didn't disagree. So I just wanted to see where you stood on at least those two technologies if you're interested.
Yeah, I know these technologies and it can be applied to the Ruby. But it's, right now, the condition is out of my hands and his hand or the other's hand. So I -- so, is it possible? Yeah, he said if he can, he wants to apply these optimization techniques to the Yelp.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Luke Kinnis. I'm the author of Puppet. One of the things I'm most excited about in Leopard is that it's the first operating system that ships with a Ruby that has D-Trace built in. And I'm really interested in using D-Trace to help my Ruby programs go faster. And I'm wondering if you or anybody in the core Ruby team has spent time with D-Trace, using it to pay more attention to how Ruby actually works from the outside or if you're even familiar with D-Trace?
I've never used D-Trace by myself and I don't know, maybe we have to use the D-Trace to optimize the language.
I mean, for me, I'm going to use it to optimize. I'm just, I know the little I've done with it has shown me, it's given me a lot more understanding of what's happening internally, even though I know the code paths, seeing it from the outside ends up looking very different. So I was just curious if you guys were spending time on it, but thank you.
Yeah, I use Alpro file on Linux to check the profile and it helped me. And D-Trace is even more helpful.
D-Trace is kind of weird because it's not a normal profiling application, so it ends up being very different from normal profiling, I guess, because it's kernel-mediated, so you're paying attention to what's happening in the kernel.
Thank you.
Hi, Mats. My name is Michael Newman. I'm from Europe. So my question is, do you want to join us next year at the European Ruby Conference?
Yeah. Yeah, I could make it this year just because it's a week after this conference, you know.
Really? You come to Vienna?
No, no, not this time.
Not this year, but next year?
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay.
The two conferences are too close, you know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
One in the States, I'm in Japan, one in the States, one in Europe, in the very close weeks. It's kind of tough for me, myself and my family. So if you have the, maybe once in a month, maybe a monthly interval or something, it could be quite possible.
Okay, we'll find a different date for the European Ruby Conference.
Yeah, many people ask me to give a presentation in their conferences, like the Postdam in Belgium and some open source conference in Brazil or the States, but I just can't make it. I'm sorry. But I'll try next year.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mats. My name is Keith Bennett. Thank you also for Ruby. A couple of questions. One thing is Rails has propelled Ruby. I mean, it's done a lot to boost the popularity of Ruby. My first question is, do you see any other kind of technology or niche or special purpose use that could boost Ruby in a similar way as Rails has done?
The other technology that? The other technology that could boost Ruby?
Right. Like Rails, Rails has boosted the use of Ruby because it's a special, it's a tool for a special task that Ruby is especially good in doing. I was just wondering if you have in your mind any other kind of task like web frameworks or, you know, that might do a similar thing, that might also, you know, people say, wow, this is great, you know, this is another great reason to use Ruby, because there's this other thing in another market or area.
Me and Cleve, we started work, and sometimes we distributed the multi-core or the clustered the application within Ruby. So, the interactive handling of the huge data on the clustered machine can be next bug field of the language.
Interesting.
I want to do something for, I myself do something for that field.
Interesting. Thank you. My second question is, with all this enthusiasm that we all have about Ruby, do you ever look at something we're doing and say, well, maybe Ruby isn't the best tool for that job? You know, is there, do you have any guidance as to, you know, where we might be using Ruby more, where we might be using Ruby less, that kind of thing?
What Ruby may not suitable for some task, but what is the concern?
Well, okay, like, for example, some people in the Java world in particular will say, Ruby is great for developing fast prototypes, fast applications, Rails, something like that, but there can also be benefits for something that you can check at compile time, like Java, that because of the flexibility of Ruby, it's easier for people to write code that might be non-understandable to others. How well it scales to a really large team? You know, maybe a multi-year project with 10 or 20 or 50 people. Do you see Ruby as being as strong in that kind of use as it is in the smaller project?
Well, Ruby has some kind of weakness in the project of the huge team members, like the 100 people working on the same project, like, but, I don't know, the role of the game is changing, you know, that in the most field, the required people is getting smaller and smaller, using the more effective tool. So...
Good point.
Like, yeah, Java still shines in the huge, the large-scale enterprise, something software, but, but the most of the application, mostly, especially on web, is getting smaller and quicker. So, Ruby still shines on there. And then, using other, some tools and the discipline, and the reliability of the software can be, what?
Increased.
Improved.
Yeah.
And then, I want to address these kind of the team coordination on a large-scale system. That's the kind of the task for the Ruby 2.0, or the next, the version next to 1.9. So, I wanted sometimes the class namespace things, or maybe we, I'm going to talk about that in tomorrow's keynote, but it's kind of the task we, I wanted to address in the future.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hey, my name's Trotter. And in your essay for Beautiful Code, you wrote that one of the things that makes code beautiful is it being familiar. And I'm wondering if there's anything that you have wanted to implement in Ruby but have not, because you wanted to keep things familiar and not go too far outside the box to alienate people?
Is... No problem.
In Beautiful Code, in the essay you wrote for that book, you said that one of the things that makes code beautiful is it being familiar. I was wondering if there's anything in Ruby that you have not done because you wanted to make sure that Ruby stayed familiar? Is there anything?
Well, the, probably the center of the beauty of the Ruby, the language, is it's one step ahead from the ordinary people, just one step ahead of them. For example, the, I don't know, the list, or the small talk, or the Haskell, or some kind of that advanced language, was way step ahead of you, I mean me. So, it's kind of tough for the ordinary people like me to understand its beauty. But the Ruby is just one step ahead of me or the ordinary people, so we can understand it, and by following its tradition, or the culture, that we can make it, we can grow one step ahead. So, that's the beauty of the language.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, I'm Ed Boraski. Those who don't recognize me because I cut all my hair off. I have two questions. The first one is, what is your second favorite programming language?
My second favorite programming language? Ah? Ruby? Yeah, Ruby is my best favorite language. I love all programming languages, except for several. And, like, what? Well, list?
List?
Whatever. I name list and C.
Okay. And the second question is, what would you take out of Ruby? What do you think is in there that doesn't need to be in there?
Take what? What to remove from Ruby?
Yeah, right.
Probably, there are several things to be removed, but I just can't think of any right now.
Hi, Matts. I'm Bill Kleb from NASA. Thank you for Ruby. I say that every year I see you. I guess Ed sort of stole my question already. It has to do with the Toyota Production System, which has, you know, enabled car companies like Toyota to take over the planet in terms of producing, you know, very high-quality, low-cost things. And I was just wondering if you've ever studied the Toyota Production System and the concepts in it of lean production, in terms of how you develop your software, in terms of when you find an error, you stop the production line and you make sure that error never happens again, or that type of error? And also the idea of, sort of Ed's question of, you know, there's what, the seven different kinds of MUD or WAST or whatever? And do you ever consider that, like, when you're developing a Ruby or libraries and so forth? Because I've heard rumors, like in Ruby Core, that you guys are talking about punting a lot of the, sort of the standard libraries out into maybe gems or something to try to strip down what you're sending out at the moment, so.
The lean software development, or the, I find myself surprised when I see the similar principle in the lean software development or the agile programming. And I didn't, I didn't coordinate with them, so just, it's just coincidence, or the, yeah, good principle says independently, that happens independently. So, it's pretty interesting. Yes.
Hi, Matts. Evan Phoenix. I have two questions. The first one is, so, did our continuations in or out in 1.9?
You have to require additional liability to use continuation in 1.9, so it's officially out from the core language, I guess.
Okay. But still in? In general?
Yeah, but we, yeah, 1.9 can use continuation by requiring external liability.
Okay. The other question I had was, would you, you know, for Rubinius, we've been developing a lot of specs for 1.8, and, you know, would you, have you given much thought into a way that we could work towards sanctioning those, to say like, this is 1.8? And this may be the time, since it feels like a lot of things are moving on towards 1.9, but some of us are still working towards 1.8. And so, maybe this is the time, since it feels like it's calmed down, and maybe it has stabilized, that we could work something out in that arena?
But the 1.8 spec is basically fixed, but so...
But the question is, what is the 1.8 spec?
The 1.86?
Right, right. No, but I mean...
But, you know, that... It's kind of time to start some kind of document, the one...
Sure, sure. I mean, but, you know, you can lean on us, because, you know, for Rubinius, we've been going through and doing all, most of that work in terms of, you know, finding out, okay, these are the things that this method does, and these are the things that this one does, on a very precise level, to say that this is the, this is the general overview of the Ruby universe in 1.86. So, there's not, from your perspective, there may be very little to do, other than to put the Matts stamp of approval on it.
Yeah.
Executable specs, yeah. Not implied specification. You can think about it, if you want. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
How much of a answer do you expect from me? Yes, it is, or something. Well, the, we recently formed the Ruby Association in Japan, and we still being the teeny organization, but we getting sometimes the sponsors, but, so we got, when we got enough resource, we are going, we are planning, vaguely planning to organize the fixing the spec both for 1.9 and 1.8.
Okay.
And until then, we can help each other to, like, you are going to make the test reads for 1.8?
Yeah.
And we can help and correspond and help each other.
Okay. Well, I guess I look forward to when you're ready.
Hi, I'm Chuck Leduke. A question around parallelism. We, we're kind of out of, we're out of gigahertz, we're not getting many more of those, and we're getting lots of processor cores. So, in terms of parallelism, what are plans, or is that an interest for you with the language?
Basically, the parallelism is standing in the, I don't know, the processes, I mean, the separated memory space, and the core, even in 1.9, does not have the, what, pang glane parallelism, just because of the giant interconnective lock. But, you know, the poking processes and the distributing tasks between the processes can accomplish the multiple utilization. And the Coaches is now working in the multi-VM on the process, so that we can distribute the tasks in a one process, one VM or threads, and utilize the multiple. We have several options, and we are working on it.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Chad?
I have a question.
Go ahead. You have to come over to this, no, you don't need to. Go ahead and use that mic.
I'll offer here.
All right.
Otherwise, I'll step on the mic cord and everything over. Show myself, sync. I stepped on the mic cord, as I said, stepped on the mic cord. I'm Chad Fowler. For several years, you talked about a feature that you wanted to add to Ruby 2 called selector namespaces, which was, in my understanding, a way to, a context-specific way to do things like override the behavior of existing methods, so that it could be done safely in a system. What are your thoughts on that now?
The select namespace is pretty tough to implement efficiently, so that's the biggest obstacle to implementing it. But it's still in the two to less for the one, the Ruby 2.
So, that actually brings up another question, then, since there's no one else here. I'm just going to ask questions for the next 30 minutes, if you don't mind. What is the difference between 1.9 and 2.0?
1.9 is the kind of the transition out to the one, to the 2.0, that's because, you know, every, the most major backwarding compatibility, it would be introduced in the 1.9. So, the Ruby 2 will be a, basically an enhancement without any major backward compatibility for scalability, any of the features for the large-scale development, or something.
Is there anything new or that you're doing or that you want to do besides Ruby, or at the same time as Ruby? Is any new projects or anything on your mind?
Well, I'm interested in a lot of things, but I don't really have the ability to accomplish it. Basically, I'm working on the mail reader, which is basically Gmail on your laptop, and it's, I know Emacs, and it's working.
An Emacs mail reader?
Yeah, yeah, mail reader working on Emacs, and half implemented, half in Emacs list and the half in Ruby.
All right. Thanks.
I'm Rich Comer, and I have a quick question for you. Is there anything that you would like to see someone in the community create for Ruby that you just don't have time to do, but you'd really like to have done?
Maybe.
Other than selector namespaces?
Well, some of you may remember the last year's keynote Dykhead talk, and we, I encouraged sometimes the teeny edge corner enhancement talk, and that was just because that was fun, but, you know, it didn't really work out, mostly due to, for me. And I think it's about time to, for us to set up the kind of the collaboration center for Ruby development, like, you know, Rails has its track site, and, I don't know, Python has its roundup site or something. We need to better the issue tracking, the bug reports, and the repository managing side, but I don't want it to be run on track, I mean, on Python. So, maybe some of you, some of you can raise your hands and volunteer to set up a good site, and to, to sometimes the organizing... to set up the good site and to, to sometimes the organizing our development effort for the core Ruby.
Okay. So you've lovingly come to be called sort of the benevolent dictator in the Ruby community. I don't know if, I don't think you probably called yourself that, but someone, it sort of came about. And I've noticed that there's, I wouldn't necessarily call them competitor versions or flavors of Ruby, but other projects with differing interests or goals, or many goals in common, have come about like J Ruby and Rubinius. And I'm wondering if these projects have taken some of your control away as the benevolent dictator of the Ruby community and how you feel about that? And also, I'm wondering if it makes more work for you? Because suddenly you have somebody saying, when are we going to get a spec for 1.9? And how you feel about that?
Well, I consider myself not as the dictator, but you are humble servant. Anyway, it's kind of weird feeling, you know. Some ways, some people consider myself responsible for creating language. Perhaps the, yeah, maybe designing a language is a sin. And you, if you design a language, you will be punished with two tortures to sitting in front of people like this. But, you know, considering the fun and enjoyment out of the language development, it's kind of the cost I have to pay.
Okay, thanks.
We can broaden it beyond Ruby if you want to.
We have time for about 46 more questions. But seriously, last call, we don't need to wear, is this a question?
Wait, you're running, are you running? Run, dude, all right. Here?
Hi, my name's Tamara, I'm from Thoughtbot in Boston. And I was just curious if you see a difference in the coding style between code that's written in the United States or in Europe and code that's written by Japanese coders?
I don't know. I just don't focus on the food, the country living, they're also living. I just don't know. And, oh, recently, the, in the Ruby community in Japan was, they're called golfing. It's very popular. So the, the Ruby call from Japan, Ruby users can be more shorter these days.
Thank you.
I'm Luke again. Are you involved in getting Ruby working or added to any distributions? I think it's in most distributions now, but it's only just starting to get, you know, OS 10 is, this is the first release, it's officially, you know, a fully supported language. Are you involved in working with the distributions or the operating systems or the vendors at all? Or is that entirely separate? Is there, and if you're not involved, is there a group of people in the community who is kind of dedicated to making sure that Ruby not just, isn't just available on these platforms, but is actually supported and works well and is kind of done well?
I didn't work for any leopard Ruby, and Lawland somewhere is responsible. And, but Apple offered me, offered us for help to more better integration to the operating system. And I agreed to work on them, work with them. So the Ruby on next OS 10 is, will be much even better.
What about other platforms? What about other platforms like Solaris and the 98,000 Linuxes and the 48 BSDs? I mean, there are lots of operating systems out there. And, I mean, I have a project that I'm, I'm working with package maintainers and the, starting to work with some vendors to get my package on the, on the operating systems. And so I know how complicated it is to do it effectively. And so I'm wondering how, how that's done in the Ruby community, I guess.
Oh, comment. Could you translate?
Working with package managers and package maintainers and Linux distribution, free BSD, how to integrate Ruby into those environments.
So we, we talked with the other, the package managers, like the, like one in the free BSD or the Debian people. The Debian Ruby manager is my personal friend. So we're working on it, but...
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm David Kuntz. I had a question. You've mentioned several years now that you're, you've looked into I/O and that's one of the languages that you mentioned. And, you know, one of the most compelling features of I/O is that there's no keywords in the whole language.
A little bit slower, please.
Oh, sorry. One of the main features of I/O is that there's no keywords in the language. And I was wondering, since you've been looking into that, is that something you would ever consider for Ruby? Sort of, you know, most of Ruby is methods and you can do a lot with overriding those methods. But then every once in a while, you run into something, we had a talk earlier today, where you run into problems because you can't sort of intercept the double at symbol because that's a keyword, or like the and keyword. And I was just wondering if that's something, a direction you could ever see Ruby going, where everything was a method, there was no keywords in the language?
Yeah, the I/O is a pretty interesting language, but it's not the way that Ruby is going.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm David. I had a question about your experience in nurturing the Ruby community and how it's grown and changed and, you know, your role in that and any advice you would give to people who want to start an open source project and how they can nurture it along.
The community management is a pretty tough task, but I was lucky to, that we, the very nice people, like Chad here, came in, and the house food, and came in and went some kind of the, well, what do you call it, nasty guy or the naive guy, take it, why would we say something, 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 in the strong words? And the house food came in and, don't be like that. And that's lucky we can have the people like that in the community. And it's, same thing happened in the Japanese community as well. So like, yeah, gathering nice people, like, is the key to the community management, I guess.
A quick follow-up. Have you found certain technologies help the communication work better? Do you have a preference for source control? Do you have a preference, I mean, like, some people are looking at Git now?
Technology?
Yeah, like, for example, Git, that Linus Trivolz uses. Is that something that you could see being helpful?
Well, maybe, but I'm not sure the community management and the technology related.
Thanks.
I don't know. Sorry.
Hey, hey, I'm Toby. I'm fortunate and I've spent the last couple of years working with nothing but Rails. But I've come to expect Ruby to work a certain way because of that. And every once in a while, I open IAB and start typing five dot minutes dot ago. And when it gets confused because it doesn't know what I'm talking about. So my question is, did you, do you, did you consider to bundle active support and these kind of...
A little bit slower, please.
Pardon?
A little bit slower, please.
Yes. Did you consider bundling active support of Rails with Ruby?
Uh-huh. Some of the active support is getting in 1.9 by like simple two block. But, I don't know, but I think the two days ago, not getting in the core language.
Hi, I'm Amy. I don't have a technical question as such, as you've probably come to expect. I'm curious, what do you think about people who are not programmers in their background, who learned Ruby as a first language? Would you recommend that or would you not? And if so, why?
Well, the Ruby is primarily designed for the programmer. Just because I am a programmer, then it will be designed for me. And for that reason, Ruby has, we have a very sharp corner. So it might not be best suitable for the introductory programmer. But, you know, the, it's, it's kind of policy. You know, when you, some parents don't give their children a sharp knife. But some does, some do. And, and I've heard that a lot of people that, that learn programming through Ruby and very successful. So it could be very possible to study programming from Ruby.
Thank you.
Hi, Matts, I'm Greg. Actually, my question's about the Ruby standard library and sort of what you feel the role of change in the standard library will be in the future. I feel like there's a lot of really good things in Ruby standard library, but there's also a lot of redundancy. There's a lot of libraries that, you know, that have third-party equivalents that are much better. And it seems like sometimes the change in the standard library is slower than what you might expect. What do you see happening in the future with that? I mean, we've, just a, two, a couple of examples are, we've got several options parsing libraries that are competing within the standard library. And we also have something like csv.rb, where faster CSV is pretty much the de facto standard for Rubyous. How do you see the standard library evolving over time?
Well, it's kind of the conflicting feeling. You know, the diversity is a good thing in general. So, so the competing libraries can be good things to accomplish the better technology. But at the same time, the diversity can cause confusion. So I, I feel like it's good, but sometimes it's troublesome, so...
But my question is, if you're not actively, you know, watching over the standard library and making decisions about that, do you think perhaps someone should be? I mean, do you think there should be tighter control over that? I think that it seems like the focus is entirely on the core right now. And the standard library is creating a situation where, you know, a new Rubyous might use csv.rb when most Rubyous would use faster CSV. Or, like you said, the diversity causes some sort of confusion. And, I mean, part of the notion of standard library would be to standardize things.
So, well, I wish, I wish the level of people will coordinate before creating the conflicting project. But, but I couldn't stop, I can't stop them. But I wish they could coordinate better than, with the mouse.
But what happens when they attempt to and then it doesn't happen? I, I guess what I'm saying is, who's responsible for Ruby standard library ultimately?
Well, so, well, if, if I knew about the everything, I can make a proper decision for everything. But, you know, like the command line person library, I just couldn't decide which is the best one at the time. And that's the reason we have several in our standard distribution. But the, we, we are going to remove something, some of them to separate gem. Not bundling anymore, so. Yeah, yeah.
At that point, you'd be...
Get up long is the one of the candidates, so it's going to be out.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Matts, my name is Laurent, and I have a question regarding 1.9. It's about name arguments. I saw a few months ago on the Ruby Dev mailing list that there was a discussion about name arguments. But there was only a few emails and then nothing else. I just wanted to know the status of supporting name, name arguments or key arguments in Ruby 1.9.
The name, we decided to name the argument not in 1.9 just because it's too huge for the timing. So it's left for Ruby 2. And, but we, we will support the order, the hash and the name hash in line. So it could be emulated using the hash table for the time being.
Yeah, the problem with the hash table is that you can, it's not possible to have multiple arguments with the same key.
No.
And this is the only program we have with hash.
No, that, that's too bad for the object.
And if we, if we write a patch to support name parameters for 1.9, would you accept it or...
The, are you going to write the name, name argument?
Yeah, if we, if we try to...
I'm not sure yet. You know, just because compatibility. If it's compatible enough to merge in the 1.9 series, it could be accessible. If not, they wait for, we need to wait for Ruby 2.
For 2.0, okay, thank you.
Okay, we're on the last of the questions here. So if you're not up here now, too bad, wait till tomorrow.
Too bad.
I'm Dave, and last year, internationalization was a really hot topic.
It's serious.
And I still want to, I'd like to know where is that officially from you today in incorporating it into future versions of Ruby? Unicode, international, internationalization.
The 1.9 include the Unicode support, the four Unicode support. And what, I will explain tomorrow, I guess.
Okay.
Hello, I'm David, and I have a question about book publishing in Japan. Do you remember five, was it five years ago in 2002? Takahashi, you brought the boxes of books. Do you remember that? All 23 books that were then in print about Ruby in Japan? There were, you know, three about CGI programming and there were ones about how to learn programming through Ruby. And all the things that we now think, wouldn't that be great to do? I'm just curious, actually, I mean, it's, you know, obviously, the English language publishing has taken hold. There's a lot of Ruby books and more coming out. I'm just curious, for my own personal interest, what, what's happening in Japan now? I mean, are those books still around? Are there three times as many books? Are there, you know, fewer? But what's the, what's the book scene in Ruby in Japan?
I stopped counting on it. At the time of the year 2002, the publisher sent me a copy of the book. But not, these days, they don't send me anymore. Too bad. I don't know. When I go to the nearby bookstore in a, in a small town, I see at least several Ruby books in the store. So it's pretty common in, maybe, maybe 50, 60, I don't know. I just don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Matts, we're two students from Duke University and we were wondering if, you know, you...
We're two students from Duke University, and we were wondering if, you know, you believe that Ruby should be taught at universities in replacement to a language like Java, or, you know, if in Japan, they're teaching Ruby in universities.
Some universities taking their course in Ruby. For example, the Tokyo University took Ruby for their primary programming course, and some other universities as well.
Great, thanks.
I'm Jim Perez. I'm asking a question, two questions by proxy for Steve Rogers. He wants to know, what kind of programming do you do day-to-day?
What kind of?
Programming do you do day-to-day?
Ruby.[1733.83][1733.83](laughter)
Andy wants to know, what's your favorite movie?
Favorite movie?
Favorite movie.
Movie? Oh, wow. Matrix?[1748.66][1748.66](laughter)
Okay. Thanks for all the great questions and the others.[1758.16][1758.16](laughter) And most of all, thank you to Matts. Another round of applause, please.[1770.16][1770.16](applause) And that is it for the evening, so we'll see you back here at 9:00 AM tomorrow, and have a good night.
Thank you.